All right. We will call the City of Milton Common Council meeting to order Tuesday, December 20th at 7:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
A meeting was noticed here at City Hall. Dave's Ace Hardware and the Piggly Wiggly.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries and we have an agenda. Item number three, public comment. Seeing no one. Okay. Item number four, approval of the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
It's a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number five, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 21635, Resolution authorizing loan of $300,000 from Tax Increment District Number Six to General Fund.
This is just on necessity for purposes of our audit. When we did the big refinancing and over the summer, we had said that we were not going to utilize the line of credit that was authorized back in February. And there was $400,000 of new money that the library donations will pay off in 2018. And we said there was also going to be to make up that $700,000. We would, for cash flow purposes, we need to come up with $300,000. And we said we would do an advance from TID 6. And so this formalizes what was pretty much agreed to.
Okay, is there any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve, Resolution 2016-35.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding the City Council's receipt of the employee handbook. For those of you that attended the trainings that we've had over the past several months, and specifically the one that our insurance carrier provided, we were all informed that we all were covered under the employee handbook and were obligated to follow the employee handbook. But none of us had actually signed anything acknowledging that we read and understood that and received a copy of it. So, and the other item that was supposed to have been taken care of when you adopted the ethics ordinance was, everybody was supposed to sign that and I have yet to receive anybody's copies that they have signed it. So what you have in front of you are the items that are requiring signatures. And do you have any questions regarding the employee handbook? Have you read it? If there's questions, I have not received any from anyone. But now would be a good time if you did not understand what was written in the employee handbook.
I was just wondering, there had not been any changes since we approved it, right? Okay, and that was in the spring?
Correct.
Right, okay.
And so why on page nine, is there a line through communication and through the titles? Is that just? Yeah, yes.
It's just how it's viewed on the screen.
Oh, okay. Computers do strange things. I was just being puzzled. I understand and forgive, it's just that I was puzzled. Okay. Okay, thank you.
So you want both of these? All three of them?
1992. Does it have a page number? 1992 and?
It's all of these.
Okay, oh, I see, there's a back of that, okay. This is being passed down?
Dave, would you like somebody to deliver these to your house or mail them so you could mail it back?
They're good to mail.
Okay. And Jeremy and Maxine, are you going to hand these in tonight or when are you going to sign them? Are you refusing to sign them or?
I haven't completely read this copy to sign. I'm a little bit disturbed with the copy of the council's expectations after we named those.
What one of those would you like to be exempt from following? Well, are there certain, are there things that are listed that you would like to be exempt from following?
No, I'm not exempt, I don't want to be exempt from following any of it. All the years I've ever been on the council, we have never had to sign a paper like this saying we're going to do all these things when it's understandable and to me, it's nothing but common courtesy and respect that a person has always done when they take this position. And therefore, I don't see, and you have in here refrain from use of electronics. Well, if we aren't all going to do that, it's not fair. If some can sit and play on their phones and the rest of us turn ours off and don't do it, you know, these things are not fair. And if you don't show up for the meeting and don't notify anybody, that's not fair either.
Well, you know, these are things that we actually discussed and talked about and voted on after the ad hoc committee made the recommendations and you all voted on them.
This is true. But then, if we're going to sign this and everybody's going to sign it, then let's all abide by it.
That would be our hope. That would be our hope. And clearly, there have been? I'm going to sign all of these. It's any elected officials. I don't believe I am above anybody else. Okay. So the expectation will be that we'll receive all of these by the end of the week? Okay. So if you have a question or you would like to be exempt from any of these expectations, I guess it would be preferable that you would put that in writing. What ones you feel like you are not able to follow? Is there any other questions? You can always put it on the agenda item to, you know, go over the ethics ordinance, to go over anything else that you voted for and you've now changed your mind about. But these are all items that you previously discussed and voted on and that's why you see them in front of you. Anything else? Any? Item number seven, discussion and possible action regarding a potential spring primary for the 2017 City Council and mayoral elections.
I'll just give a little kind of preview to this. Alana, please feel free to jump in. It might misspeak or you want to add to it. But state statutes provide that if there are more than, more than double the number of available seats, a local municipality may choose to hold a primary election. Since I have been here, this has been discussed almost every election. This will, I think, be the third time we've had this discussion. The difference between, I think, this discussion and the most previous discussion was that this discussion is happening before papers are due, which is January 3rd. When this was discussed last time, it was discussed after that January 3rd date. And I know the council had kind of given some direction or at least some thoughts at that time of if we're going to do this, let's do, let's make this decision prior to the submittal, the submittal due date of those campaign papers. So that's why it's on the agenda tonight, so it's before that January 3rd date. But this is at the discretion of the council. The council can choose to agree to hold a primary in the spring if there are more than double the number of seats available for either the mayor or the council. Or they can choose not to, or they could do one and not the other. The discretion remains with this entity. Anything, Alana, that I missed?
Do you, as people are turning in papers, see the potential of having an overflow of Anita primary?
Not yet.
I would agree that setting the policy in motion would help the understanding of what to expect. So I would agree on that because I know that there had been a previous time where there were multiples.
I mean, it would be my recommendation, and certainly no one needs to follow it, that if it is the council's wish to have a primary election, that that gets kind of set as the standing policy. So the discussion doesn't need to happen every December. We can't do that? No?
I understand the reasoning behind it, but in Subpart B of that statute, it goes on to provide that a city may provide by charter ordinance that whenever three or more candidates file nomination papers for a city office, a primary to nominate the, nominate candidates for the office shall be held.
So it would have to be a charter ordinance that's adopted? Okay.
That's how it reads, is that if you want to have it automatically go into place, then you need to do it by charter ordinance, which you could. Otherwise, you need to, each year, the governing body needs to decide as you're suggesting whether or not they're going to provide for spring primary.
So there's a potential to do that for this year and then address the charter change at another time?
Yes, that's correct.
I move that we, if I'm allowed to move that we change for plural applications this year so that we can proceed with this year's elections.
So the, the spring elections?
Spring elections, great.
Second. So there is a motion in a second to have primaries for the spring elections of April of 2017. Is that what I'm understanding?
I believe the, you clarify with, with the motion in the second is that I believe the intent was to move that in the event there are two or more candidates who have filed nomination papers for a office that's up for election in spring, that there will be a, there will be a primary for that office.
And that seems to address council or mayor race. Well, what about council? What's the number needed there?
Same. Three or more for the office, and so then if you have, what is it, this year, three? So you need six.
So basically?
Actually, you'd need seven.
Okay, then that's where I was getting at.
So there's more than double the number of available seats. That's how it generally works.
So seven and three constitutes a primary for this particular?
Seven or three.
May I correct to reflect the better wording of our attorney?
Is that second still there? Everybody understand the motion? Dave, do you have any questions? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. General items. Anybody have any general items?
I have.
Go, Dave. Is this an agenda item, Dave? Is this something you want to put on the agenda? On the next agenda or what are we talking about? Thanks, Dave. Linda?
I like that idea, Dave. And I'm going to just jump off of what you started to say and I would say that I would like to see all of our council members treat our committee and commission members with respect also. Just to add to what you've already said, but I have, I have a couple of questions. Al, we were talking in tourism, we were going to be working on a tear-off map. And now that we have our booklet, our tourism booklet done, is that something that we can still plan on doing in-house?
Yeah.
Okay, good. And then, Dan, you put in your report that there was a leaking roof? That was the fire station, right? Nothing for this building? Okay, good. And then my other question is for Howie. How is everything going over on Nelson Avenue with that water pressure situation?
They changed a couple of things on the pump for the well. And so the well was off for a while, now the well is back running again. And recently, since they changed that one part of the well because it was starting and stopping so much, we haven't been hearing as much or anything from the residents now that the air problem is there. So we're going to re-contact all of them to see if they're getting any more problems, but they haven't contacted us since we did that repair. So hopefully, it's fixed, so.
Good, good. And then, I was also wondering, Anisa, the way that we did our agenda, you have listed on here committee reports?
Correct.
So is everybody going to be able to report?
Well, I think anybody that's a chair of a committee can just give a brief report on what their committee has done since the last meeting. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have one more question? You gave us, you gave us this copy here of the situation with Nancy and the mayor? I thought that our council was listed on here. Are we, as council members, supposed to be doing something here also?
I don't know, you were all given a notice, like I was, for a notice of a hearing, January 5th, 11:15 with Judge McCrory. And we just want to make sure, it was addressed to council? So some people said they got it in their mailbox and we wanted to make sure that everybody had a copy of the notice, so.
Did everybody get one, because I haven't?
Yeah, we handed them out.
You handed out this one, which we would have a nice quorum at 11:15. But I was just wondering if our times are staggered, you know?
The notice is simply a notice of hearing. And it is, the mayor's correct, it's addressed to the City of Milton Common Council. And I think, I think the, the understanding is that the mayor wanted everybody to know that this had been addressed to each of you. The plan, as I understand it, on 11:15 AM on January 5th is that there would be a conference call with the, with the judge at that time to schedule the hearing. So there wouldn't need to be a staggering of times. It's just, just one call.
Yes, it's for a scheduling conference. So the council will not, will not attend or will not participate. This will be the attorneys that will be participating in setting up a scheduling order. That's what all its purpose was. It's just to let you know that it was set for a scheduling conference on that date and time.
Okay, so nothing's expected of us individually?
Correct.
So if they're, so they schedule a hearing?
They are going to have a scheduling order in place which presumably would address things such as a trial date and any motion, pre-trial motions that would be filed, when they're going to be filed, what documents are going to be, what documents need to be filed and that sort of thing. So that's the purpose of that. It's not to decide anything other than just a scheduling order for when things are to happen.
And then, does the council appear at the hearing or trial? Or when is the first appearance by the council if that would take place?
Well, that will be in part up to the attorneys as to whether or not they're going to require the attendance of any council members at, at a trial or any other hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, if they, if they are, for instance, if the city's council decides they want to have one or more members of the common council testify, then they'll so notify the city and be in contact with them. Or if there are subpoenas that are issued by the other attorney, the same thing. Be in contact.
Is there anything else, Alana?
So, Dave, have you, have you got this, Dave? Do you have this? Have you received it? This is for the Nancy Lanner versus the mayor and council?
No.
So we'll just add that to your packet that we take over, mail to you.
Anything else? Okay. Committee reports. Who would like to go first on committee reports? Thank you, Dave. Any, who wants to go next?
We had Public Safety Committee tonight. I'm sure that any of the pertinent things, which I believe there were none, will be touched on by the chief during his report. But we took a look at accidents without cause and discovered there's no action to be taken. Otherwise, it was more informational. That's about it.
Thank you. Next. Linda, Nancy, or Maxine? Or I can go too?
I'll go.
Or Ryan?
Story preservation, I believe, met last night mostly just to have burgers with, was it tourism? Unfortunately, I couldn't make it myself, but, or Parks, that's what Parks. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it myself, but as far as it goes, I believe they all had fun. But that's the extent of that one.
Linda? The tourism met this week and everybody has a copy of the new booklet that we have now completed. This is going out to several different areas to hopefully bring more people to Milton. And then, there's also a form that is available now through City Hall for our nonprofits to use if they choose to advertise on the commercial in the donut. That way, they have enough time to look at it before any production would have to take place and such. So if anybody out there is looking for that opportunity, they need to get ahold of Inga. And I don't want to talk about the fire, you talk about fire.
Oh, I did. Oh, okay.
She does. She does a great job.
Thank you, Maxine. Nancy?
Well, Howie has been keeping us up to date and the well is progressing. The roads, the roads are all done for the season and everything is in its place.
Anybody else? Okay. We had a fire commission meeting, of course, last month. And the transition team has really been doing a good job. And they've been meeting regularly. They've been working on standard operating guidelines. We voted on a new staffing structure for the fire department. And they were implementing that in December. And they were going to monitor that to make sure it stays within the budget. And those of you on the fire commission also received the latest recommendations for tomorrow's meeting from the transition team. And it has our shared services agreement with Janesville to actually save us some, some money hopefully in shared staffing and have a better response time. And so we're excited to look over that. Everybody received that. So far, I have not received any questions or concerns from anybody on the fire commission. They were sent those latest recommendations last week. And we had planning this evening. And planning approved an expansion to Casey's General Store. And I think that's it. I don't think there's anything else that I missed. Linda, can you think of anything else from fire commission?
Everybody got paid this month. It's the first time in a couple of years that we haven't run into a problem with that at the end of the year, so that's a good thing.
Okay. Anything else from anybody else? All right, our team building exercise. If I could go anywhere for Christmas, it would be where? Chief? Because Howie's got his head down. Maui? Lisa?
He has a good party, though. I'd be all right with that.
I'd like to go to Howie's house? No. The Florida Keys, I guess, Key West.
Linda?
I would want to go wherever my kids are. And they're all in three different places. It's all I could say.
Nancy?
Oh, last year, we went to Tucson. And that was such an enjoyable location that I'd like to go back.
Ryan?
I'll be the oddball and say Maine.
I've actually never traveled for Christmas, so maybe Mexico.
I've never traveled for Christmas, so I'd like my whole family to be in the Virgin Islands.
Al?
Every year of my life, on Christmas Day, we would always go to my grandparents' house. This will be the first year of my life that I don't have my grandparents, so I wish I could go to their house.
Maxine? Don't you have a new house to have a party at?
I've been to Florida, I've been to San Juan, and I guess I'm satisfied. and I guess I'm satisfied to stay home with my kids and my family.
Thank you. Jeremy?
I can't see it as something that I would really do, so I'm having, I'm struggling trying to pick somewhere to go, so, but truthfully, I just want to be in my living room, and that's where I'll be.
Nice. Dave? Dan?
New York City.
Attorney trader.
My mother's house with all of my siblings and their family.
Howie, going to Maui?
Well, let's see, what could I get at Scott's house? He's gone. Oh, let's see, yeah. Yeah, if the kids went with us, Fiji Islands.
She just wants to be in the council chambers. Okay, do we have any staff reports? The administrator?
Just wrapping up the end of the year. It's a short week for us this week and a very short week for us next week. Tax bills went out. We continue to get calls all the time with questions about the tax bills, and we do the best we can to answer those. But just, you know, the end of the year, and looking forward to 2017 in many, many ways.
No joke. I know. I'd say something, but I don't want to jinx us. Chief of police?
Just a couple of things for our Facebook followers. Hopefully, you're not sick of me and all of my snow reports. But we honestly, and I think Becky's gonna help us out with the courier this week, too, we honestly have zero desire to write any tickets at all for snow removal parking. Please move your car. Look at the ordinances, look at my Facebook posts. If you have any questions, call me. If you are stumped and need to figure out where to put a car, I will do my best to help you come up with some suggestions, but this is really about getting our streets clean in the most efficient way possible. And Howie's crew is doing a great job with that, and having to work around about 20 cars every single snowstorm to do that. And I'd really like to see some improvement on that, so... Big thanks to Ashley Kunkel at the library and the Milton High School Literacy Club. They just provided us backpacks full of books for every single one of our squad cars that we can give a book to a child if they're in the middle of a traumatic incident and need us to give them a little bit of light in a situation or a little bit of a distraction. And I think that's a great program. They didn't just give them to us, they gave them to the fire department and several other local police departments as well, so that was really cool. Another thing that was really cool, in the holiday spirit, on the 9th of December, I was joined by Justin Geske and Joe Fox for a shop with a cop at Janesville. They partnered for the first time with Farm and Fleet in the city of Janesville. Janesville Police Department has run their own shop with a cop program for years, partnered with Farm and Fleet, and raised so much money, they had more kids than cops. So they called for backup, and we sent some officers, and that's always a great program, and always puts me in the holiday spirit to shop with these kids. So we had a great time with that, and big thanks to them for including us in it. That's all I got.
I have a quick question. I met with Officer Sullivan from the Janesville Police Department, and he gave a presentation on that new app. Can you tell us about that?
I don't know a lot about it. But Janesville Area Crime Stoppers has a new smartphone app that they've added to their kind of suite of how do you get tips to them? So there's a phone number, and there's a website, and now this new app is something you can put on a smartphone, and it's a new way to communicate anonymous tips to Janesville Area Crime Stoppers. It's called, I think, the P3 app. I'm starting, anytime that I do a news release where I'm gonna ask people to call Crime Stoppers, I'm gonna include the information on where they can find the app as part of the news release. Chad suggested that I do that. I don't know a lot of how the app actually works, though, but it's a program that Crime Stoppers is really starting to push, and so I think that's a good thing to keep publicizing.
Yeah, so you can download it, it's free. You can download it to your iPhone or your Android, and it is anonymous, and you can send pictures. So if there's something on the internet, you can send a Snapchat, you know, a screenshot of a Snapchat, or you can take a picture of a crime in progress. You can send this anonymously, and if it's something that is happening in the city of Milton, that will get forwarded to the Milton Police Department. So it's a, sorry. It's a great way to anonymously report crimes. But if the crime leads to an arrest and you're eligible for a reward or something, they can still contact you anonymously and say, hey, you know, we got money for you. And so you can report bullying incidences, you know, anything that you feel like the police need to address. So I have actually lanyards that I can hand out at the next council meeting, and I can, you know, we can, you can, with permission, we could all download that app at the next council meeting, and then you guys can play with it, and then if you have any questions about it. I mean, I think when we have such a positive opportunity to partner with other communities, it would be a great role modeling opportunity for us to show, hey, we got the app, encourage all of our community members to have this app, because it's, they have actually been able to solve quite a few crimes with it. They've found it to be very, very useful, so I'm promoting it.
Yeah, and I think it's a great program. I'm gonna throw one little asterisk on there that if it's a serious crime in progress, please call 911 and don't just send something through the app, because there's a bit of a delay there, you know, that if you send a P3 alert now, somebody may not see it for a while because it isn't monitored 24 hours a day. So I would like to throw that out there.
It is monitored.
Oh, okay. Well, I did not know that, so still, I think I'd rather have a 911 call.
Disagree, but it is monitored 24 hours a day. Yeah. So, something for the courier to look into, because it's kind of exciting. Library?
I'd like to thank all the people that gave books so that the kids could put together those bags for the responder vehicles. We did get a lot of people donating books. Also, with Christmas break coming, the library also always offers a reading challenge to the kids, so we have winter reading challenge going on, starting tomorrow, actually, and kids will read to win free books, so check that out.
And do you have any updates on...
Sure, sure, sorry.
That little project we gotta go with?
Right. Working on a few things left in the building, but it's 99.9% complete. Final walkthrough is next Thursday. I think that's going to be, it's gonna be beautiful and fine, and I can't imagine anything being really big wrong with it. We've just seen some cosmetic things, really. And the furniture will start arriving the first week in January. Then we start moving in. We have a lot of people helping us to move in, actually. We've gotten a lot of calls, as well as the Mecca's kids. They're always there for us. So move-in should go well. And then we're going to have a grand opening in February. So we'll keep you posted on that.
Clerk, deputy treasurer?
Could you bring us up to date as to how many filled-out forms have been received for the open offices?
I've received only one for a common council member, which is yours, and...
I was hoping you'd approve it. I mean, there's always that off chance I'm gonna, a township member.
Yep, nope, nope. Everything was in order. And then I've received campaign registration and declaration of candidacy for Larry Lane.
And director of public works?
We just, you know, plowed snow, and we're continuing to clean up the snow. And I'm also trying to make some ice down at the ice rink, but now it's gonna be 40 degrees again, so... And Christmas tree collection starts January 1st, so...
And then the Easter stuff will come out, or Valentine's Day.
Do we have the warming house open now?
Not yet, because there's no ice. So she schedules the kids to be there after the ice is there, so... Sledding Hill's open, though, so...
Finance director treasurer's report?
I don't have anything other than the treasurer's report. If anyone has any questions, there shouldn't be any surprises in that report that is contained. We just threw it in here because it's sort of on the only agenda item on personnel and finance, so it seemed to make more sense to just throw it on the council agenda.
I have a question. For the cash balance summary in TID 6?
Yep.
That dollar amount, does that include the $300,000 for the library?
Right, so that'll go down $300,000 after that, after the advance.
Okay, thank you.
But then it's collecting 1.1 million next year in increments, so... There's a healthy, healthy balance.
Anything else from anybody else? A motion to adjourn?
Motion to approve that packet.
Oh.
Dan's packet, second November's financial report.
Oh, because we didn't have personnel and finance. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion or debate? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, approved. A motion to adjourn. So moved.
There was a first and a second at the same time.
Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? We're adjourned, see you next year.